Well, welcome. Tonight, we have one of amazing seven people who have stood up and said, hey, I want to help the kids in the town of Milford be a little bit better. So tonight, we're going to talk to one of the seven people running for three spots on the school committee. So why don't we start with an introduction?
Thank you, Al, for having me. My name is Laura Sierra McColey in Jemmy. I live in Milford with my husband and our three daughters. And I'm a graduate of Milford High School.
Of course you do. How could you ever get out of Milford with your mom and dad?
Yes. That was part of the draw to settling here in town, to be near family.
You know, joking with my daughter, saying she's finally a true Milfordian, because she's third-generation Milford, and she lives within two miles of her mother.
Yes.
So, Senora Say, I guess, everybody knows, and your dad been on the FinCom forever?
For a number of years, yes.
Yeah, now he's going to do the water company. It's going to be hard to be the first time in, I don't know, decades that he's not been there.
Right, yes.
So Laura, I'll start with the same question I'll end with.
Okay.
I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Well, I think that's a great question. Thank you for asking. I very value education. I'm very concerned about our students, and I want them to get the best education possible. I'm a mom. I have two girls who are in the school system. One at first grade, one in kindergarten. And I have one that will be in school in a couple of years as well. I bring a lot of experience and education to the table. I'm a teacher. So I teach at Hopedale Junior Senior High School. And I'm really excited about the opportunity to serve on the committee and to serve the people of Milford.
So now, you're living in Milford. You've got your kids starting the trek in Milford.
Yep.
All the way up to Mount St. James, I'm assuming.
Yes, hopefully.
And they say, can Sierra McColeys go anywhere but Holy Cross?
No, it would be lovely if they chose that, but I will leave it up to them. Let them choose. Yep.
Yeah, it's a tone of the heart. My oldest got accepted, and he came down to Holy Cross for Clark. Kills you. I mean, to her, Clark was a better fit.
Okay.
But I kept thinking, it's not purple.
Yeah.
My youngest only applied to Holy Cross, so there was no doubt. That's the only place she would apply and go.
Yep.
So...
So I applied early decision as well. That's really where I wanted to go. I'd applied to a couple of their schools. I applied to B.C. and Fairfield, but I knew in my heart that's where I wanted to go.
I don't know that I could apply, well, apply to the Pigeon Coop, the home with the great pigeon.
Yeah.
I mean, great school.
Yep.
Just not purple.
No, no, not purple. And my husband went to Providence College, so...
So a friar.
Yeah, we'll see.
Well, I mean, as a backup school, you couldn't really complain about PC.
We'll leave the choice to them. But yeah, we go to games now, and we try and visit like on homecoming events. Went to winter homecoming this year. That was really fun. Went to the basketball game, it's on the New Heart Center.
Isn't that incredible?
Unbelievable.
So now, you look at Milford, and you say you want to get the best education for the kids. If you join the school committee, where would you start?
Well, I think I would just, you know, I would first, you know, try and learn as much as possible. I've already been doing that in my research. I've been involved in the schools for a while, just trying to get to know everybody. I know some of the administrators already. I've been on PTOs since my kids entered the school system. Since right when they turned three and they entered Shining Star preschool, I started to get involved. Starting with PTO, and then I moved on to school councils. So I was on school councils at Shining Star and also Brookside. So I think I would use my background, my knowledge, my expertise in education and, you know, learning, and just be as involved as possible to make some good decisions for the students.
A lot of things come up where people are making decisions to stay in Milford or leave, you know, through school choice. Why do you think people are choosing to leave Milford school system?
I think part of it is a little bit perception. I think that there's a perception out there that maybe, you know, because of the rankings or because of MCAS scores, that maybe we're not the best place to be. I don't think that's true. I don't think that's accurate at all. I think we have a terrific school system, a lot of positive things going for us, but I think that that's what we're up against.
Why do you think the impression is that?
Well, our MCAS scores aren't where they are in surrounding towns. So we need to work on that.
Now, you're going to send your children to Milford.
That's correct, yep.
But Milford doesn't have good MCAS scores. Why would you send your kids here?
Well, I think it's not the only thing to think about, I think, when you're deciding where to send your children. And I think, and for us in particular, MCAS scores aren't necessarily the whole picture. You know, they're not the, you know, there's a lot of other things to think about and a lot of other factors. Part of our reason why MCAS scores probably aren't as great as they should be is because we do have a large population of ELL students, and so that average necessarily has been brought down slightly for that reason. And so we need to continue to work on providing education and success for our students to rate, you know, to raise those scores. I think in particular, in the area of math.
Well, and I think realistically, people are worried that because we have a lot of immigrants in the school system, that, I mean, let's face it. I know I had the most beautiful, most intelligent, most everything daughters in the world, because they're mine. And if I asked Uncle Phil, he probably would say the same thing.
Same thing, yep.
But realistically, the fundamental question is, am I getting the best education for my children by having them in Milford? If I asked you that, what would you say?
I think you are, absolutely.
Then why are the MCAS scores not showing it?
Well, I think it's something that we're working on, but I do think that there is that large population. And, you know, if you're coming into school and English is not your first language, it's going to be difficult to take that test.
And we ran into it years ago. I'd said a number of times, when my daughter, or my oldest, hit eighth grade, Tommy Daveran was there.
Who I had as well.
And if you had Tommy, you knew there was a passion that man had for his school.
Absolutely, yep.
And I remember going in saying, and I was less than diplomatic, when I said, Tommy, why do your MCAS scores suck?
Okay.
And, you know, he looked at me point-blank. He says, because you're ignorant. I said, oh, good, enlighten me.
Right.
And he sat there and explained to me how Milford had a, not a Gaussian curve, but a bimodal curve.
Okay.
Where our top students, you saw the Gaussian curve, and they did as well as any students in the area. And then you had the ELL population.
Right.
But what they reported was the normalization, the average.
The average, right.
So when you looked at our average, it looked like we were much lower
Correct.
than all the towns around. But when you look at the top kids in Milford, I'll submit after seeing the data that they do as well
Yes.
as anywhere.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I just saw the list of schools that the students got into from the high school already. I mean, there's some really prestigious colleges on that list. They're doing really well. We offer a lot of great programming, over 19 AP courses at the high school level. We just started that early college program to allow our students to take courses that are going to transfer to Framingham State. I mean, those are amazing programs that we're offering to our students.
And that really does make me feel good, because I was one of three in our class that was told, you leave town. Our principal, Uncle Paul Raftery,
Okay.
who was probably one of the best principals you could ever ask for. We ran out of science courses. So it's like, okay, what do we do now?
Right.
And he somehow got Dr. Salvier for guidance to cut a deal with Franklin Dean Jr.
Oh, okay.
And three of us went over for bio and chemistry our senior year, because they just weren't any more courses.
Right.
So we had to leave Milford. Not that we complained, because it was kind of cool to take these courses.
Right.
But it makes me feel better now that no Milford kid has to leave the town.
No, we're bringing those programs here to the school through grant opportunities, and we're really creating a lot of opportunity for our students to take those college classes early and to get a sense of what's installed, you know, later on down the road after they graduate.
So now, you've been involved in school council?
I have, yep.
What'd you think of that opportunity?
That was great. I really enjoyed it. That's one of the things, like, I really think wanted me to get more involved in the schools and to take the next step to try for school committee, because I really enjoyed being part of school council at Shining Star, and I'm kind of part of school council at Brookside now as well.
You know, it's funny, because when I got involved, because a fellow named Jose Viera, who back then was principal of Brookside.
Okay.
And I asked the same question. I said, look, I know that I may have a bit of a biased view, but this is the most beautiful, most intelligent student you'll ever have.
Yeah.
My daughter.
Right.
How do I make sure I get the best education for her? And he point-blank told me, he goes, number one, you can.
Absolutely.
But number two, get involved. And I said, okay, well, I know nothing about education. You know, I mean, when I went to school, my father did what he knew. Now, he was one of those people who came over, had four years of education in Portugal, because that's what you got before you had to go to work.
Right.
And whenever something happened, he was told he should show up to school to support his son. He put on his little hat and his little suit, go down, sit in the audience, and know nothing. He had no idea what to do. All he knew is, I'm supposed to support my family, I'm here. But it was amazing, because we didn't know we were part of the bad kids from the bad side of town. We never knew there was a bad side of town in Milford.
Right, yep.
So nobody ever told us, and we just kind of went along and seemed to do okay.
Yep.
If somebody comes to you and says, how do I get the best education for my kid, what would you tell them?
I think it comes down to communication and, yeah, being involved and, you know, understanding, you know, what's going on in the schools. I think that's definitely part of it.
A lot of parents are scared. Laura, they're scared because they look and they say, okay, if you're mixing in the immigrant kids. Now, we all remember, you know, I mean, you've got Ecuadorians now, who are the new Brazilians, who are the new Portuguese, who are the new Irish, who are the new Italians.
Right.
So if we look back, I don't know of many of the residents of Milford that are Native American. We all seem to have come over.
Yep, from somewhere, yep.
From somewhere.
Right.
And we're all mixed in. Thank God, nobody ever told us that we were a drain, because we didn't know about it. We just blended in.
No, and I think our diversity is part of our strength in town, definitely.
How so?
Well, I think we get to meet other people from different cultures and different backgrounds. I mean, we're a global society, a global world. I think that's definitely a good thing for our students, to learn from each other.
Now, parents, I've heard it too many times quietly, that I'm worried that if I get all these immigrant kids, that the teacher will have to teach to the lowest level, and therefore, my children... Now, you're an educator.
Yeah, no.
If I'm worried that you're going to teach to the lowest level, and when we were kids, before you were there, but I remember you'd get the smart kids, and they'd be told, go to the library, do a research project, because they were already passed.
No, teachers are doing differentiated instruction all the time, every single day. And it takes a lot of work and effort, and the teachers have to work hard to do that, but they're doing it every day. I just had a professional development opportunity at Hopedale during a half-day, and in the afternoon, we spent the entire afternoon talking about differentiated instruction. And it's something that, you know, is definitely being done in the classes.
So you don't think that having different levels brings down...
No, it does create challenges for the teacher, but I think with the right support and the right support from administration and from the principals, you can definitely differentiate your instruction to reach all learners.
Listen, are you familiar with our Chromebook initiative?
Yep.
I thought that was one of the basis that at least I voted for, you know.
It allows you to differentiate probably a little bit easier sometimes in the classroom with using technology.
Sure, because now, you know, it's funny, because my daughter, who teaches at Milford High with special needs, put it in perspective years ago to me when she said, Dad, my job as an educator is to get every kid to their potential. She goes, maybe a little more.
Absolutely, yep.
She goes, my classes, I have to deal with the fact that not everybody's potential in special needs group is the same.
Correct, yep.
But, you know, I thought about it, and I said, you know, realistically, isn't that every educator's mission or goal?
It's one of mine, absolutely, yeah. I want every student in my class to be successful. And I don't know what that necessarily looks like, but it's probably going to look different for each and every student. But I want them to all be successful in their own way.
And, you know, when we fund special needs, everybody automatically assumes it's the kids below the curve that need help up. But I look at the top 10% of our class as special needs, because they're our next Nobel laureates.
Okay, yeah.
If we don't develop special programs for them...
Yep, we should be providing the right level instruction, you know, for our high-achieving students, our middle-level learners, and, you know, even, you know, special education as well as ELL, absolutely, yep.
How do you feel about the facilities in Milford?
So, yeah, I mean, that's something I would think I would look into further if elected to the school committee, definitely. I would want to look into that and look at what our long-range plan is.
Be nice to have one of those.
Yeah.
We're missing one.
Okay, so that is definitely something I would look into, yeah.
Here's my gripe, you know, for years, we had a long-range ed plan, and that served us probably for 15 years.
Okay.
And we redid Brookside, redid all the way up to Woodland. And now, poor Kevin, I'm merciless on him, because I keep saying, where's my plan? Where's the next one? And we're supposedly going to get one this year.
This year, yes, that's what I've heard, yep.
What do you think the importance of this plan is?
Well, I think it's just making sure that we have the right support for our students and to learn, making sure that they have the right environment and the right facilities so they can be the best that they can be in the classrooms.
Well, it's hard to support a plan that doesn't exist.
Right, I'd want to see that plan.
You know, we start talking about, there's a school coming, you know, and a few of us got yelled at saying, you just built a school. I said, you're right.
Yep.
And we're going to do another one in about eight or 10 years called the high school. Have you had time to walk through the high school?
I have. I got a tour from Josh Ottlin.
Nice guy.
Mm-hmm, very nice.
I'm really impressed.
Yep. I enjoyed meeting him.
What do you think of the high school?
Yeah, I mean, I've been in a lot of high schools, because I'm a high school teacher myself, so, you know, I go to professional development in other area high schools. So I've been in some schools that are brand-new, and they look very nice. But I've also been in some other schools that are similar to Milford High School, in that, you know, they're on the older side.
Well, it's been 40-odd years since she first opened up.
Yep, some of it looks the same as when I graduated.
You know, it's funny you say that, because I went into the C wing, the science wing. And at first, I thought, how cool, this place looks just like when I was here.
Yeah.
Then the epiphany, wait a minute.
Yeah.
It's been 40 years. Why does it look the same?
Right.
What do you think of our science program?
Yeah, I think, I mean, we definitely offer a lot of courses and a lot of opportunities for our students. So, but I, something I want to look into further.
I mean, the driving force in Massachusetts is biotech.
Right.
You know, biopharma, you know. Why don't we have a premier biotech program at Milford High? Can you think of a reason?
No, but I think that we do need to think about career pathways. I think that, you know, kind of brings me to one of the things I hope to see, you know, more developed further. You know, I do the internship program at Hopedale High School, that's part of my role. And I do see us, you know, hopefully, offering more career pathways like we have at Milford High School in the hospitality and tourism and the banking. It'd be nice to see other pathways in computer science, maybe biotechnology, some of those other areas, and give our students an opportunity to see what those career paths are like.
Well, let me put you on the spot, because one of the things that's been bothering me for a number of years, when I grew up at Milford High, or really, it was eighth grade back then, if you were going to college, you went to Milford High. If you didn't want to go to college, you went to BVT.
Right.
So, you know, people like my father, who came over, if you put him in organic chemistry, it would not be a pleasant experience for either the professor or him.
Right.
He was not an academician by any stretch, but give him a tool, the man was an artist.
Right.
I saw him do things that I couldn't even begin to fathom how.
Right.
Now, what worries me is to get into BVT, you've got to be the top 10-15% of your class.
It's competitive.
But that means you're the top 10 or 15% of your academic class. What happens to the people like my father?
Yeah, so I think even in a comprehensive high school, we need to think about offering other opportunities for our students, absolutely. So those career pathways that I mentioned, I think, are a nice opportunity for those students to see what else is out there and to maybe have some real-world, hands-on experience. I think the more we can do to bring career opportunities to the students at an earlier age, the better off they're going to be for success after high school.
But how do you do that? I mean, you know, it's easy to say, okay, you're one of the smart kids, you're going to go to one of the better schools, and you're going to learn one of the better careers. Great. What happens if I'm not smart academically? I'm not a dummy. You know, it's not like, okay, I don't know what I'm doing. I just am not academically.
So I think those hands-on opportunities for the students is going to be, would be really key in that area. So maybe a manufacturing pathway, where they have an opportunity to see and, you know, do maybe construction and, you know, do some hands-on experience in class and coursework, and then carry that on to opportunities outside of the classroom. So maybe it's, you know, job shadows, maybe it's internships, but then connecting to different businesses and seeing what's out there.
You know, you bring up an interesting topic, because when you say manufacturing, when I was, we built a plant up in Worcester at Unison, and my bio operators were starting at 55-60 grand.
Yeah.
These were not low-paying jobs.
No, they're not.
You know, so you turn around and say, the jobs there
Yep.
are good, solid.
Yep.
And they're stable, because even if you go to work for a small biotech
Yep.
and that fades away, there's 100 more coming that you could go work for.
Absolutely, yep.
So what do you do to get these kids involved?
Exposure.
How do you do that?
I think you develop the classes, the coursework, you know, like a sequence of courses, so they can really see what it's all about. And then you make those connections to the businesses. You, you know, take the field trips, so they can see what the manufacturing sites are like and the companies work, and, you know, meet with people, job shadow, interview people, and get to know the companies and learn more about the industry.
So now, you're involved in internship program.
Yep.
What's that?
So I, basically, I interview my students, I meet with my students, and I help them find placements outside of the high school where they earn academic credit. So similar to like a co-op program at a vocational high school, but this is through the comprehensive high school.
How cool.
Yeah, it's really neat.
Because, you know, I think about it, every year, next week or the week after, I'll be interviewing three saders, three purple people
Okay.
who are chemistry majors at Holy Cross, or four, and will be keeping two of them
Okay.
as interns.
Mm-hmm. So is this for the summer?
For the, well, you know, it's funny, I don't know why anybody would want to intern for me, because I set the bar so much higher. Unfortunately, some of them won't go away. I've had to hire them, because they won't leave. But, you know, we start with a summer internship program
Yep.
where we get them involved in the lab, in marketing, in all sorts of pieces.
Yes, they can see different facets of the business, yep.
And then, during the year, I always keep one. And the, you know, the rule is, if your cume goes down, you're fired. It's very simple. I want to see your academic, your first two years. But make no mistake, if you start spending too much time playing in my company
Yep.
and I see your cume going down, I'm not going to have your parents throw things at me.
Right.
And these kids, I mean, last year, the low one was a 3.8.
Oh, wow.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
This is like...
High-achieving students.
High-achieving students to begin with.
Yep.
But they get a good perspective on what's out there.
Yep. And that's what I think the intern, the high school internships do. And I prepare our students for college internships or to the workforce, wherever it is that they want to go. But they're getting those career readiness skills, the employability skills that I think can transfer anywhere. You know, things like teamwork, collaboration, work ethic, professionalism, you know, all of those skills, I think, that, you know, can help them no matter what they decide to do after they graduate.
And that's fantastic, because it's so hard to teach these kids, you know, when you say professionalism, presentation, teamwork.
Yep.
Last year, I had two really good kids. I mean, they were smart, they had good drive.
Right.
They almost panicked when I told them their final assignment from me was they were going to present their research
Communication.
to the whole company.
Yep.
We were going to have a company meeting, and I said, I'm going to have everybody show up, because I'm going to have free pizza. So if I put food...
They'll come.
They'll come.
Yeah.
Any technician, I mean, no matter what, biotech
Yep.
t-shirts and pizza, always draw.
Yep, food's a big draw.
And they were scared to death. They told me that was the biggest worry they had, was standing up in front of, you know, all these PhDs and all, and explaining their research.
Yep, yep.
But they did it.
Yeah.
And they did a great job at it.
Right. And now they can hopefully take that experience that they had in the internship and apply it to their next job or a job within your company.
They're not worried now when they have to do a presentation.
Right.
They know how to structure it, they know how to put it together. You know, they've learned how to work in an interdisciplinary team, because I got them involved in product launches, so they could see the difference between sales, marketing.
Right, that's a great experience. And that's what I hope that some of the high school students also have the opportunity for those kinds of experiences.
Well, I mean, it's really cool, Milford Fed.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Now, you talk about an institution between, Chris, I mean, the two banks in Milford that have been here forever.
Yep.
You know, the Milford National and Milford Fed. I just noticed, there's a bank in the middle of the school.
Yeah, yep, for the banking program, yep.
How cool is that?
Yeah, so the students are getting an opportunity to work inside that bank after taking the classes and serve their peers.
So now, if I was to ask you, what do you think the three biggest challenges the school system has? What would you say they are?
Challenges? Challenges? Well, I like to, I was thinking about like my focus areas. Like, I'd like to kind of use my expertise and my knowledge, my background in the college and career readiness piece and making sure all of our students are graduating and going on to be successful. You know, members of society, productive members of society. And I think, you know, the college and career readiness piece is important. I don't know, sure if that's necessarily a challenge right now, but I think it's an area we can definitely continue to improve.
Are there any programs you'd want to add to the school?
Um, well, I think seeing other additional career pathways that we talked about already tonight. So, you know, maybe construction, you know, maybe it's computer technology or computer sciences, maybe it's manufacturing.
Any programs that you aren't overly happy with having in the school system?
Not that I, no, not right now. I think we've done a really good job with those programs we have. I just want to see us continue to improve upon those. And I think there's room for improvement. I think the other one, maybe the elementary enrichment programs, I think we could focus there. I think that's really important that we're providing things like foreign language for our students at the elementary level. I think that's something that we used to do a number of years ago and we no longer have in the schools today. So I think that's an area where we can improve as well.
I mean, how many people grew up knowing Senora Se?
Mm-hmm, that's right.
You know, you think about it, you know, everybody knew you're going to learn Spanish from them.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And you had a role model, you know, just a good person who taught you a foreign language.
Yeah. I think that's important, to have that exposure to a foreign language at an early age.
Well, you know, you start thinking about the global economy.
Right, yep.
It's really embarrassing when you realize that maybe the Russians are more parochial in their view. But besides the Russians, the Americans were the people that I knew with the fewer, fewest language skills or the fewest people with language skills.
Right, yep.
I mean, you go to Europe and it's nothing for people who've spoken two or three languages.
Yep. Yeah, I think, I think we could improve in this area.
School choice ties to a lot of the things we've already been talking about, but
Right.
at one point, well, what is school choice?
So that's if you decide to send your child to another district. So I think, you know, maybe improving on our enrichment at the elementary school might help that and help, you know, parents choose to stay here in Milford. We want our families to stay here in town and want to send their children to our school system. So I think having that opportunity for maybe more enrichment might, you know, might help in that area.
Now, when you say enrichment at the elementary level, a lot of people don't understand, what, what would you enrich?
Well, I think things like STEM opportunities, you know, more science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and then, like I said, the foreign language. But a lot of times, a parent or a family is deciding to send, you know, send their children to a different district. It's happening at the kindergarten level. So I think that's where, you know, we may need to spend some focus time.
And that's a killer because if you lose somebody
In kindergarten, the chances of them coming back are probably small. You know, once they leave the district in the kindergarten year, then they're out usually for a number of years.
Because I remember that was a hard decision when both my daughters, when they first went in, Milford didn't have the full day, kindergarten didn't have all this stuff. We put them in a program in Holliston, Montessori.
Oh, yeah.
Now, that's where I went to talk to Jose Viera because, okay, now we've got to decide. And I knew where my heart was.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and we went up to the Faye School and they do all the testing and all that. God, it was a beautiful school.
Yeah, I haven't been there, but
Oh, it's fantastic. Student ratios of like eight or 10 to one, I mean, everything. But what threw me absolutely into my, my initial reaction was when I met this young lady. She was from Holliston, very well-spoken, very beautiful presence. And I asked her, well, tell me about your hometown. She said, you mean here at the Faye School? I said, no, you said you were from, see, the Hopkinton or Holliston. I said, tell me about your town. Well, we really don't get involved with the town much.
Mm, yep.
And I sat there and I said, wait a minute. I was a Milford kid. And one of Milford kids wanted to do the first thing, run away. And I'll admit, I mean, ran to Worcester.
Yep.
That wasn't far enough, ran to DC.
Okay.
When that wasn't far enough, I ran to Paris.
Okay.
And absolutely loved DC, loved Paris. But when I had a daughter, there was that gravitational pull that I wanted her back in Milford.
Yep.
I wanted her to experience Milford. If you're school choicing your kids out, aren't you losing part of that?
I would say yes. Yeah, I would say yes.
So
And I think we offer a lot of opportunities for students here in town. I think they, you know, the programming, our arts, our music programs. I mean, we offer some fantastic programs for students and a lot of opportunities.
And, you know, you talk about STEM. And the minute I bring up STEM, because being a chemist, I'm a bit biased.
Yep.
People say, don't forget STEAM.
Yeah.
There's the A, the arts.
Yep. Yep, important too.
And I mean, I was really always impressed with our previous superintendent because for the first time you had somebody going down. And I remember when he got up on stage with the orchestra.
Oh, okay.
And took his baton and
Yeah.
I had no idea what the heck he was doing.
Yeah.
But the reaction I saw amongst the bandies and their parents
Yep.
really made me feel good. Because for the first time, they felt, okay, so if you're not a football player, soccer player, whatever, he still cares about you.
Yep.
You know, so that A part of it.
Yeah, it's important. And we have, we have some great music and arts programs here in the district.
But now, how do we bring that message across to parents?
Yeah, I mean, I think marketing is going to be key in this area. I mean, we need to change the perception out there and, you know, help people understand the kinds of programs, things and things that we do offer.
And that was, you know, last year was the first time I saw a school principal really take the, if I say the offensive, it sounds wrong. But Josh got up and started explaining to people that if you have a top student, and frankly, I'll admit, we're prejudiced that I have 4,200 kids that I really care about in Milford. You know, when we refer to our kids, it's all 4,200.
Yep.
But the real judges are not school committee, administration. The real judges are Holy Cross, that other Jesuit school.
Yep, we won't have to name it.
You know, BC, you know, the one with the pigeon as the mascot.
Yep.
PC.
Yep.
And then all the Ivy League schools around. Because they're the ones that really tell me whether or not Milford is doing a good job with our top academic kids.
Yeah, the list of schools that our students have gotten into in recent years is impressive.
And isn't that really, at the end of the day, isn't that what Kevin's job is? You know, our superintendent, isn't it his job to educate our children so that they have options?
Mm-hmm, and so that each student can be successful to his or her own potential, whatever that may be. And be, yeah, graduate and find their success.
But tell me now, one of the challenges as an educator. I mean, I expect our educators, I'm paying them, even though I only pay 1/28,000 of their salary, but I'm paying them to educate my children.
You're right, yep.
Aren't we seeing too many parents move the role of just not educating them, but bringing them up?
Yep. Well, I mean, I think that's what I said in the beginning. I think I'm going to mention this about the communication and the collaborative effort. I think working together with the student and the teacher and the parent, having that relationship, that's really important.
But as an educator, do you feel that it's getting better or worse as far as what's expected of you? You know, you're no longer just expected to educate the child.
Yep. And I think that brings us to like the social, emotional learning piece. I think that's why the district is focused in that area. That's one of the areas of strategic growth and I think that's a good one to focus on. We want to make sure our students are supported. You know, they're not really going to be available to learn, like the ABCs are, you know, in, in the preschool level and whatever it is at the high school level if they're not supported, you know, as a person and they don't feel like they can, you know, be successful. So that social, emotional piece, I think, is really important as well.
And, you know, and that unfortunately gets overlooked because I remember sitting in the Woodland principal's office because I was on the council.
School council, yeah.
School council. And I guess it was a 10-year-old, fourth grade, had flipped off a teacher.
Mm-hmm, yep.
I got, I was stunned.
Mm-hmm, yep.
I was absolutely stunned because, you know, when we did things that weren't necessarily the best options, it was like, yes, you can do whatever you want to me, but don't call my parents. Please don't call my house.
Yep.
My father never touched me, but I think he would have whacked me if I had ever done something that bad to
A teacher, yeah.
Oh. And then I happened to be sitting in the office when the teacher came in and the first words out of her mouth, not the teacher, the parent, came in, looked at the teacher and said, what did you do to antagonize my son? I wouldn't even know how to answer that question.
Yep.
You know, you're supposed to educate my children, not raise them.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's a, it's a, it needs, there needs to be a lot of communication. It needs to be a lot of teamwork, collaboration. And that's when I think, you know, the education works the best, is that collaborative effort between families and students.
But now, as an educator, how do you reach out to the parents? Because, you know, I think about it and when I grew up, we all had two parents at home. Today, it seems like a lot of, I mean, when I was coaching soccer, I was amazed at how some of the single parents survived. We had three against two.
Right.
My mother, my darling bride and I against two children.
Yep.
And we barely kept up with them.
Kept up, yeah.
How does a single mother or father who have a couple of kids?
No, I can't imagine. It must be very difficult, but I do think that, you know, the communication piece would help in that. Like, so for example, like, one of my daughter's teachers does Facebook and she'll post pictures of things that are going on in the classroom. And what I really like about it is it just, it allows for a really great dinner conversation. So you see the picture from the day, during the day, and you can say, hey, you know, sometimes, you know, I can say, oh, I saw that you did this project. What was that like? What were you working on? You know, tell me about it.
You were studying the polar bears.
Tell me about them. You know, so it's a great opportunity to, you know, talk amongst each other at dinnertime and learn about their day.
But see, there again, now you're projecting the Engemi Sarah McCooly House of, we sat for dinner.
Yep.
You know, that was the biggest thing for us is, you know, and I've always said, the school committee is probably in my mind, the most important spot. I mean, everybody thinks of the selectmen and other. You're going to dictate how my children spend eight hours a day. By high school, I was lucky to see them for an hour or two at night.
Right, because of all the activities and
Everything they did. And I mean, it was always like, you know, you held up dinner in front of them, saying, grandma made dinner. You know, and my darling bride would do what she could, but she was working full-time. So, you know, it was always, grandma made dinner, you have to eat it and be nice. And while you're there, ha-ha, you have to talk to me.
Yeah, now I get to ask you questions.
Yeah, now I get to actually talk.
Yep.
You know, to this day, my youngest, ungrateful offspring number two, lives in Boston.
Okay.
She's never accepted the principle that the trains run both ways. Because she'll take the train every other weekend out. But she doesn't believe that there's a train going back. And Sunday nights, we volunteer to drive her.
Right.
Because I've got 45 minutes to catch up with her.
Right, you like that time in the car.
Oh, absolutely, I get to talk to her.
Yep, yep.
So how do you promote that? How do you show parents that there's got to be a way for you to come in and spend some time learning what your child's doing? Is it Facebook now and?
Yeah, I think it's partly the communication. Either it's Facebook, social media, maybe it's Twitter. I know some of the teachers in the district are using Twitter as well to share the things, share things that are going on inside the classroom. And then it's just communication with the school in general. We're getting weekly emails.
Oh!
Yeah, the things that are going on in the school. So those are great, to know what's going on, events, you know, whether they're sponsored by the PTO or, you know, things that are happening inside, you know, during the school day.
Well, that's really good if you're communicating with your parents. I remember for us, we had to jump into that scary backpack and hope that Jimmy Hoffa wasn't hiding in there because everything else in the world seemed to be hidden there.
At the bottom, yep.
You know, we talk about scary. How do you feel about the security that we offer?
Yeah, I think that's something that we need to continue to look at. I, I think we need to always be on top of it, making sure that we're doing our due diligence, that we're working with our first responders, we're looking, working with the community members, making sure that we have, you know, the appropriate resources. Yeah, absolutely, something that needs to be looked at all the time.
But do you feel comfortable? I mean, you're packing your children
Yep.
and sending them off. And that was always the scariest thing for me.
Yeah.
I'm handing my daughters to somebody else to take care of. And one time, there was a lockup or lockdown, whatever they called it.
Yep.
Luckily, it was a false alarm, but I was getting texts from my daughter saying, we have, Houston, we have a problem.
Right.
And it was like
Scary.
Scary movie.
Right.
Because as a parent now, now luckily, I was just down the road in Hopkinton. So it took all about 45 seconds for me to do what I shouldn't do, jump in the car and drive to the school.
Drive there, yep.
By the time I got there, I get another text saying, all is fine.
Right, yep. Yeah, no, I think we need to make sure we're, you know, we're prepared, that our teachers are prepared, that they know what to do in those situations. And I think it comes down to training and communication.
But what can you train a teacher on security?
Well, I think, you know, kind of putting up the different scenarios and making sure that they know what the protocol is and what to do in certain situations. And I think it comes down to the teachers need to also just use their best judgment. When faced with something in a real situation, you just kind of use your best judgment and do the best you can for the students and the safety of your students in the classroom, whatever that may be. You know, whether it's leaving the classroom and, you know, taking, you know, taking flight somewhere else and, you know, or staying or moving or, it could be a number of things.
So actually letting them know that when the day comes, and hopefully it'll never happen at the center of the universe,
Right.
but that there is a real problem, this is what you do.
Yep. Here are some, here are some options and, you know, but, you know, use your best judgment and do what you think is right for your students.
Well, I mean, you think about it, we have sports teams and you're constantly practicing. You know, if you're a basketball player, you're shooting free throws constantly.
Right.
So that it's almost, you know, if you ever call it muscle memory, that the day comes when you're on the court in the game, you can't think.
Right.
You're just going to do what you've trained.
Yep, exactly.
Isn't that the same thing we should be telling our teachers? We're going to train you.
Right.
Every option we can think of.
Think of, exactly.
We're going to train you so when the day comes, and I hope it never does.
Right.
You know, it's like
That you feel prepared to make the decision you think is right at the time.
It's like we taught our kids what to do if there was a fire.
Mm-hmm, yep.
You always hoped, you know, I mean, I hope we never use Bill Tooe, our fire chief. I hope we never use my neighbor Tom O'Laughlin.
Right.
You know, it's a service that I hope I pay for and never have to use.
Yep. And I practice these things as a teacher myself. You know, we practice different scenarios and working through the different, you know, options. And, you know, it's always scary, but it's, you know, a good thing to do to prepare.
Now, when we get to the ugly part of education.
Okay.
The budget.
Oh, yes.
I mean, I'm always curious with Kevin and crew where I say, I know you have too much money and not enough ways to spend it. But how do you feel about the level we're funding our education?
Yeah, I think it's hovering around, you know, what, 4% or something like that, about. You know, I think, you know, we're in line with state averages as far as our people's spending. So I think we need to, you know, stay, stay there and, you know, do as much as we can for our students.
Well, Milford's always been a bit unique because we break the approach to our education into four buckets.
Right, yep.
One of the buckets I believe the administration has control over, they don't, but, you know, you take the first bucket, which is, I call it, our healthcare. Teachers are human.
Teachers, yep, yep.
They want healthcare.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
And, you know, in the past few years, it's never gone up 2%, 3%. It's always been much higher.
Yeah.
But they don't have really any control over it. So we bring that out and we fund that separately.
Yeah, because that's the same as in industry too.
And our mortgages, you know, our bonds for schools. Once the town decides we're going to build Woodland, they really don't have any choice. There's a fixed funding. So we take our bonds.
Take that out, yep.
Take that out as a separate bucket. That leaves two buckets, special needs and what I call general operations.
Okay.
So, you know, the special needs, again, one or two kids coming into district can knock your special needs budget.
Yep, if they need services outside of district.
Well, no matter what. I mean, you know, you could be spending 150,000 per kid. And again, they're one of our 400, or 4,200 kids. They're no more special, no less special than any other kid.
No, we want to give them the best education possible.
We want to treat them like everybody else. They're one of our kids.
Absolutely, yep.
But now you turn around and say, okay, that last year cost us an extra 600,000 on the school budget. How do you feel about the rest where we're increasing it 2-point-something percent a year?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, the, the school does a good job. I think it's a little higher than that, right? Like 4%?
Well, overall, it's 4.
Yeah, okay, yep.
You know, we always push and say, if you really looked, I don't think the school has ever not had a 6, 5, 6, 7%.
Okay.
Because if you really put in
Backing up other things, okay, I see.
You know, the health insurance that goes up 6, 8%.
Right, yep.
We built a new school. Okay, we spent $30 million. If you figure, you know, what I call the mortgage or our bond.
Yep.
If you really built all that in.
Yep.
It would be ridiculous. But it's not fair because the administration doesn't control that. We built a new school.
Right.
Okay, now it's 2-point-something million a year. You got to pay it.
Right, yep.
Sped in ELL.
Yeah, I mean, I think you just have to look at, you know, value and look at your cost and see what, you know, what programming, you're getting the most, like, you know, bang for your buck and what really is going to influence students and teachers and making sure you look at everything and kind of look at it piece by piece.
But now, you've got both sides, though. Because you're a Milford resident, so you're paying taxes.
I am, yep.
On the other hand, if you're on the school committee, you do have a bias towards the schools, I hope.
Oh, yeah, yep.
So now, how do you look at that balance of saying, it's kind of tough because if I raise taxes too high, then I'm putting a burden on the taxpayer.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's like a little bit of going after the money that we can get from the state and going through grants and things like that. So, I mean, you know, for things like ELL, we can go to the state for some of that funding. So I think it's going after the money that we can to making sure that we have the appropriate resources and the funds we need to support those programs.
But now, there's profanity that some people like using, Prop 2.5 and debt exclusion. When do you think we should reach for a Prop 2.5 or a debt exclusion?
Well, in Milford, we've always been pretty financially savvy. I think we, you know, we have a great finance committee. So I think, you know, we've done a good job of managing our money and managing our, you know, our resources. And I think that's what we need to continue to do.
So you don't think we'd be reaching for 2.5s very frequently?
I don't believe so. I think I'd have to look at it a little bit more closely, but not the way I see it, no.
So overall, if you were to look at, okay, Laura, you get, you are given the magic wand. You can start focusing on any area. And everybody, I mean, your world as a school committee member is the world of four. Because you've got seven people, I mean, your dad and I, we live in a world of eight. Because we've got 15 FinCom members, so to get anything passed, we need eight. But if three people automatically would follow your lead, where would you start?
So that's a good question. I think it comes down to a little, a few things. Can I name a couple things?
Sure.
Okay, so, you know, I'd like to see our MCAS scores improve, especially in the area of mathematics. So whether it's small group, you know, pullout, you know, small group opportunities for our students, integration specialists, that might be helpful in that, in that area as well. I like the enrichment at the elementary school. The foreign language piece, I think, is great. Let me think, what else? Smaller class sizes.
Well, that's always the holy grail. Wouldn't that be wonderful?
Well, you said anything, right?
Right, no, I mean, that's the holy grail, is to sit there and say, "We'd like more teachers."
Yep, smaller class sizes, more teachers.
Are our class sizes okay?
Yeah, I mean, from a personal standpoint, my, yeah, my children are in very small classes or what I would consider to be small classes, yes.
The kids, you talk about elementary enrichment. So you got one in first grade? And one at kindergarten?
Yes, back-to-back.
Back-to-back. Are they getting the education that you would hope for?
Yes, absolutely, they are. Definitely.
Do teachers at the quality level you'd expect?
Absolutely, yep. We've had an unbelievable experience so far. Been really fortunate. And really want, what I want for my kids is to develop that love of learning, especially at this young age. I think that's really important. You know, for them to want to read, for them to want to go to school, for them to develop socially as well as academically. And they are getting all of those things. So that's really, that's been a really positive, great thing for us.
And you believe the school system will give them 11, 12 more years of it?
I do. I mean, if we have, you know, a surplus of money, I'd even look at, at the preschool level, expanding the preschool. You know, offering, you know, if we, like, the funnest amount of money. You said, you know, to just dream. So if I'm dreaming, I'm talking about offering preschool for our students for free, you know, before they come into the kindergarten level. I think the earlier we start educating our students, the better chances that they can have for success in the future. So maybe, you know, that's teaching them the social skills, you know, sharing, waiting, you know, waiting, you know, waiting in line, you know, taking turns. But all those behavior things can translate to, you know, progress and development, that love of learning that they can have later on in their academic career, in their educational career.
Well, you think about it, we got a grant to expand half-day kindergarten to full day for three years. I always love when they do this. And then three years and a day later, the school committee said, "Hey, where's the money coming from to continue this?" And, you know, a lot of us just looked and said, "I don't know, you took this on as a three-year temporary." The fundamental question I asked was, "Should you continue full-day kindergarten?" I remember the reaction. But what would be your reaction if all of a sudden, here you go, the grant just dried up? You had three years.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's crucial to get our students as early as possible into the education system. And really, like I said, helps them to develop socially as well as academically and to develop that love of learning at that younger age. I think that it really helps set them up for a path of success. And there's a lot of research that shows that. You know, certain states are already offering pre-K for free. Florida, for example. And there's even towns in Massachusetts that are doing it.
But when we expanded kindergarten a full year, I remember the reaction I got was, well, of course. Nobody doubted or questioned if we should cut the number of hours of education we gave to our young kids. You know, now that it was here.
It was going to stay.
And it was going to stay, but it wasn't, it's going to stay because we have to. You know, I mean, for years, we've said, "I really don't care." What, in a way, I do, but I really don't, I have to admit. What people on Beacon Hill or Capitol Hill in Washington, Milford Town Meeting's always known how to take care of Milford kids. But nobody questioned. The data was there. You know, that kids who have a full day of kindergarten do better than kids who have half a day. So, you know, the idea of even pushing it to preschool is intriguing because if that will help our kids even further. You know, the idea that we talked about of saying, okay, I mean, we've been lucky. We've had, you know, 3% surpluses. And, you know, when people say, "How can you justify having $3 million a year in a surplus?" You know, we've had the discussion saying, "How do you budget any closer?" You know, if I came home with a 97 on my report card, I don't know that my parents would say, "Well, that's terrible."
Right, that's pretty good.
You know, so if we hit 97% on our budget exercise, that leaves us $3 million a year. Putting that towards some special programs, you know, like spiffing up the Science Center or...
Yep, the lab.
I mean, I don't know that we could do a programmatic thing like expanding pre-K. But if there was things we could do with the pre-K. I mean, that certainly sounds, because if I help you at pre-K, it's like when we expanded kindergarten. It seems like the, the results just show for the next four years.
Correct, yep, yep.
Interesting. Anything else you can think of?
No, I mean, I like to, you know, just basically go back into the things I talked about in the beginning, the college and career readiness and increasing our, you know, our partnerships with local businesses and looking at different pathways that we can offer our students. I know we just received the grant for Project Lead the Way in the area of computer science. So I think we're on the, the right path. We're on the right track. We're doing a great job. We just need to continue doing some of those things.
Just do more of it. And you think about it, what Milford business ever turns down Milford kids? And that's one of the most wonderful things about being in our little town, our center of the universe. Is that everybody, when it comes down to our kids, I mean, everybody gripes about taxes because I think we pay too much. Even if they say, "How much is it?" I don't care, it's too much, in general. It's always going to be too much. But if you come back and say, "But I need something," and I prove it, that it'll help the kids, I haven't seen Town Meeting ever say no.
No, and I think there's a great relationship, like you said, in the community and in Milford. People want to help each other and see each other be successful. And, you know, I think a lot of times that the, the desire to help is there, absolutely. So we just need to develop those relationships and, you know, provide, you know, opportunities for our students.
So now, we're at the end of the show.
Oh, wow, okay.
Laura, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Well, I think I, I bring a really unique perspective to the table. I'm a teacher, I'm a mom, I'm a former businessperson, which we didn't talk much about, but, you know, I do have a background in business as well. So I, you know, I truly value education. I believe in public education. I believe in Milford and our students and our community. And I want to see our school system continue to strengthen and continue to do better and improve. And I want to be part of that.
And if I don't give you a chance to talk about your family, your mother will not be happy with me. Tell us about your family in Milford.
Yeah, I mean, I have great role models. You know, the desire to give back probably stems from them, from how they brought me up and how they raised me. And partly to how, you know, how I went to Holy Cross and men and women for others and serving others. But my family is primarily the reason for that, you know.
And they've been in Milford more than a year or two?
Yes, yes. Dad was born and raised in Milford, my grandmother as well, so it came over.
She's a third generation.
I'm a fourth generation. Yes, yes. My great-grandmother came over from Italy and settled in Milford.
Now, do you live within two miles of your mother?
Mile and a half.
Okay, so you are a true Milfordian.
Yeah, yeah, we can walk.
Thank you for joining us.
Great, thank you for having me, Al. I really appreciate the time you took to meet with me.
And as always, I'll never ask you to vote, no matter what I feel about a candidate, for any specific candidate. But I'll beg you, learn these candidates, especially this year where we have seven people all raising their hands, saying, "I want to help." Learn, find out which of them represent what we believe, what you believe. And then I'll beg you, get out and vote. Let people know what you feel. So thank you.
Thank you.
And as always, to our six loyal viewers. And we probably have Senora Saye and Uncle Phil there, so we're probably up to eight tonight. May God bless, may tomorrow be a better night than tonight. Thanks for joining.